Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is June 26th, and this is the regular board meeting at the West Basin Municipal Water District. So welcome to everyone here in person and those online. If our staff could move into your role call.
You that President Houston. Director Don Deere here. Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams here. Director Desi Alvarez here. President Scott Houston.
I'm here. Okay. We need to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And you know what? I never asked anybody. See that? But I'm gonna do it on the fly. Why don't we ask Jason in the back of the room? If you would be so kind as to lead us.
Absolutely. Very big right. Pretty good. The Pledge of Allegiance in the time of the United States of America. Thank you very much, public, public, citizens, and nation under God, indivisible, but of the goodness for all.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. So EJ, if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak, I will sit on it.
Mr. President, we've not received any written requests or electronic requests for a public comment for this meeting today. But this meeting is being held both in person and virtually. Unfortunately, I'm having some computer difficulties, so my computer is not yet up. But if anybody would like to make public comments today, please indicate so by raising your virtual hand.
I don't see any.
I don't see any as well, President Houston. That's confirmed.
Very good. All right. With that, move into presentations. We have like three items. We have two proclamations and one presentation. And just so everybody knows that we are gonna, after that, be going into closed session first, so we can accomplish some business, and then we'll come back on the open session. But with that, I'm gonna go ahead and start with our proclamations. And then we'll also, we can do the photos of these as we go into closed session. So the first thing we have is Juneteenth. And I think, as you all know, that this is June, and it was Juneteenth earlier this month. And so I'll just go ahead and read this, which is signed by our board members. Whereas Juneteenth observes the declaration of the end of slavery in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865, where 250,000 enslaved African Americans realized freedom more than two years after the passage of the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally-recognized celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery, providing an opportunity for citizens to learn more about slavery's history and heritage, and to better understand the experiences that have shaped the United States. And whereas Juneteenth was officially memorialized in 2021 as a federal holiday for Americans to honor African-American history and encourage African-Americans to emphasize their freedoms and citizenship. And whereas Juneteenth was officially declared a West Basin Municipal Water District observed holiday by resolution 2022 as unanimously approved by this Board of Directors in honor of the importance of hope and continuing to do the work necessary for a better future for all. And whereas Juneteenth recognizes the triumph of the human spirit and the strength, resolve, and achievements of the African-American community through celebrations throughout the nation. And whereas Juneteenth acknowledges the 47 million African-Americans in the United States who make up 14.6% of the total population. Now therefore be proclaimed on this, the 26th day of June 2023, that we, the directors of the West Basin Municipal Water District hereby acknowledge the historical significance of Juneteenth as a day to inspire and encourage the citizenry to join in celebration and solidarity in the pursuit for freedom and equality for all. And so with that, I will just open up to my colleagues, if you have any comments regarding Juneteenth. I know I'd like to say just a couple of things, but I open the floor. Would you like to? Anybody?
I want to say comment.
What's that?
I'll make a comment.
Director Albert.
I am very happy that we are presenting the resolution today. I just wish that in the future that we did the resolution before the holiday and not after the holiday.
With the calendar and the way I work, it's always the end of the month, but.
In anticipation of the holiday, you'd be better.
Yeah.
I think I would agree with that. But I would like to say this, that I hope that everyone had an opportunity, or will take the opportunity, to read about slavery and what a horrifying deal that was for us, African-Americans. This has been a generational slap on us for centuries, not only in the United States, but in all of the Americas. Because the folks who came and stole the land from indigenous people, they didn't just stop in America. They didn't stop in Jamaica, Cuba, or the other islands there in the Caribbean, which are great places to visit, lovely places. And sometimes, anyway. But what I enjoyed most this year about Juneteenth celebration is that the way that the city of El Segundo celebrated. It was in such a great way, and it was so well-received. And it shocked me in terms of the number of people who were there. I would never would have thought that in Mayberry, and they called it Mayberry, when Mayberry would be celebrating Juneteenth. Because what I learned about Mayberry, when I worked for the city of Hermosa Beach, Mayberry was a different kind of town. And so, but I really enjoyed it. My colleague here, he was really into the celebration. But he was into it in such a way that it made us proud to be not only to celebrate Juneteenth, but to be his colleague there in his city. I thought he was the mayor for a while there. Anyway, I appreciate this proclamation. And again, I support our colleague, Desi Alvarez, about should do it before the event and not after the event. Because when you do it after the event, there's just something's lost. But I could go on, but my time is up. I can tell by the looks on some of the faces. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Anything good? Let me just say really quick, and thank you for that, Alvarez, because that's always sort of the weird challenge with our meetings are the last Monday of the month, but the fourth Monday of the month. And so usually, we are doing proclamations at the end of celebration. So maybe that somehow we could figure a way to do it and do it ahead of time. And I'll just say a couple of things really quick on Juneteenth. I'm also very proud that, you know, we were upfront and made that a holiday here at West Basin, before many others did. And of course, we were very supportive of the Assembly. Remember, Richard John Sawyer, he ran this through and made that also a state holiday, state workers. But I was also really, really proud to see that, you know, in the community, I live in El Segundo. It was a nonprofit group, Black in Mayberry is their name. And they were the ones who spearheaded the Juneteenth event, and it was very well-intended. And I think everybody was surprised by how many folks showed up, but also how well it went. And they're looking already to get ready for next year. So I think it's really important that all of us in our different roles, we support different organizations who are trying to do this across the region. Because some of the cities are not doing it, and some of them are not stepping up. So one proud of West Basin, two really proud of folks in my community for doing that. And, you know, we're all gonna keep working hard. We're not going back, as they say, right? So with that, we do have another proclamation, yes, at the end of the month, although it's still June. June is Pride Month, and so we do also have a proclamation for LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this into the record. So whereas LGBTQI+ Pride Month is celebrated annually in the month of June to honor the June 28, 1969 Stonewall uprising that serves as a tipping point for the gay liberation movement. And whereas LGBTQI+ Pride Month began as a coordinated effort between the Manishan Society, New York City activists, and homophile groups belonging to the Eastern Regional Conference of Homosexual Organizations on June 28, 1970, with the First March is taking place in Chicago, Los Angeles, New York, and San Francisco. And whereas LGBTQI+ Pride Month honors the rights and freedom of the LGBTQ+ community to live openly by recognizing the diversity of individuals who identify as LGBTQI+ and the spectrum of gender and sexuality represented within the community. And whereas LGBTQI+ Pride Month serves as a reminder of the LGBTQI+ community's history and the continued work necessary to ensure that all people are able to equity, dignity, protection, and freedom. And whereas LGBTQI+ Pride Month unites millions of people around the world in celebration the call for greater unity, visibility, and equality of the LGBTQI+ community. And whereas LGBTQI+ Pride Month acknowledges the 23 million people who identify as LGBTQI+ in the United States who make up 7.1% of the total population. Now therefore be proclaimed on this, the 26th day of June 2023, we, the directors of the West Basin Municipal Water District hereby recognize LGBTQI+ Pride Month as an annual celebration of LGBTQI+ Americans and the impact and influence this community has had on local, national, and international societies. And with that, I will also say that, you know, I'm really proud of this agency that we recognize the diversity of all people. Represent West Hollywood is one of the cities that is our service area, which is, you know, one of the leading forefront LGBTQI+ communities in the United States and the world. I happen to, of course, be a member of the LGBTQI+ community. We blessed to get to serve in public office. And I would say, even with the things that have happened, you know, looking how far it took us to get to Juneteenth. Most of us did not know what Juneteenth was a handful of years ago, let alone right now, with all the things that are happening in this country and working on a lot of progress that's been made and is being pulled back constantly right now. So whether it's LGBTQI+ community, it's women, it's other minorities, it's folks of color, the African-American community, I mean, there are multiple things right now that I think you all agree. Multiple constituencies in our country really are under attack. So we are blessed to live here in Los Angeles County. We are really blessed to have vocal elected officials, as well as our board supervisors, who are very supportive. All of us, and with all the things that are happening, I think it's our duty to make sure that we are recognizing what we feel is right and honoring all people. And I also want to thank you to my colleagues and our staff and many members of the community who do support all of us in what we're doing, not just here at West Basin. But around the region, so with that, if anyone does have any comments, they want to say I really want to pour to my colleagues. Seeing that, well, thank you very much. I do think it's very important that we have opportunities to do our proclamation within cities and within communities in the region. All right. So with that, I know we have one more presentation, and that is Aqua Foundation. Lopez, trustee. So if EJ could go ahead and take that lead on that, please.
Happy to do that, President Houston. I'm very pleased to introduce Ms. June Lopez, who is here representing the Aqua Foundation. She sits as a member of the Board of Trustees, but obviously, she's also the general manager of Molten Agal Water District. And one of the things that I always take pride in is the fact that West Basin has a long history of distinguished alumnus. And so Ms. June Lopez is an alumni of the West Basin Municipal Water District, along with Central Basin Municipal Water District. So for a presentation on the Aqua Foundation, I'm happy to hand it over to her.
Thank you so much, EJ, and thank you to the Board of Directors for inviting me to participate with you today virtually. It is nice to be back. I love how life is, and I love the order of the items on the presentation. One of the things that I truly like about getting older and living many, many years is you get to see some wonderful changes and how the recognition of Juneteenth and really embracing people of all backgrounds, honoring the Pride Month. You know, this was not always like this, as you both said, and it's just really great to be a part of this. And it really does fold in very nicely to the topic that I'm here to talk about, which is the Aqua Foundation. But I also had a chance to talk with EJ, and I think he's going to indulge me and allow me to talk about one more thing after that. But today, I'm joined by John Varela, who is a board member with Valley Water, and he is the Chair of the Aqua Foundation. And my purpose for today is just information. I know some of you who were at the Aqua Conference this last time in Monterey, we rolled out the Aqua Foundation and wanted to give you some background and give you an update on where we are today and where we hope to go forward as this foundation, and certainly open up to any questions that you may have. And I know John is here to also answer any question. So just to give a little bit of a background on the Aqua Foundation, this really started when Pam Tobin and Kathy Green took the leadership role at Aqua as the President and Vice President. And these two ladies were on a mission because we realized that as an industry that we talk about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. But how do we really do a focused leadership in this area and also hold ourselves accountable? When we talk about DEI, that is everyone, and it's all communities. And talking isn't enough. We actually have to do something and get it done. And the vision was to create a foundation, a separate nonprofit that works in conjunction with Aqua that we have all come to know and love and be members of, but a separate focused effort towards really achieving DEI. But how do we incorporate DEI into today and tomorrow's leadership? And that's the other part, is the workforce challenge, the workforce opportunities, the workforce development to really highlight and promote diversity in leadership roles in our industry. So we had, we gave ourselves one year to put it all together. And for those of you that have put nonprofits together, that's a very aggressive timeline, but we were on a mission. We're gonna get it done, and we did. We worked with legal, we worked with different stakeholders, understood the issue as much as we could, and really put up this foundation that is now a 501(c)(3). And so you have Aqua, Aqua, which is Association of California Water Agency, and Aqua Foundation, which is actually a separate entity that works together with Aqua. I compare it a lot like to Aqua JPIA. And a lot of people sign up for JPI for that pooled insurance benefits. To me, this is a way that agencies of all sizes and shape can sign on to make a pool of this really important effort. Because not every agency is as large to have their own separate DEI or racial equity offices. They don't sometimes have the resources and the bandwidth to really look at this in a focused, meaningful way. So by signing up with Aqua Foundation, you get the benefit of this pooled effort as an industry to really promote and hold ourselves accountable to DEI. So all this work, the logistic work, has been done to actually have a foundation. And then right now, we have 10 Board of Trustees, and it's a cross-section representation. And again, we're always looking for ways to diversify that, but we had to start somewhere. So I'm very privileged to be on that board right now, serving with John Varela. And John has done such a tremendous work, and I'm just here to kind of provide the update. But, you know, at the end, I'd like for him to say a few words as well, or answer any questions that you may have. So where we are today, we are really focused on three things in the very medium. One, we gotta survive with funding, so we are really asking and putting ourselves out there for financial contribution. And we've gotten a lot of inquiries and a lot of great response. And so again, as I talk about these things, I'll certainly follow up with EJ with whatever other questions that you may have, other information that you may need. So again, today is just purely for information. So aside from funding, we're also developing programs. And we're developing committees to really understand what kinds of programs could provide value. And programs just isn't just about doing things, but it's also about understanding. How do we hold ourselves accountable? What kind of strategies do we need to establish where we are today? So we can measure ourselves and see if we're being effective or not. And then the third part is the partnership, and those two sort of go hand in hand. You know, to develop those programs, we need partners, and we're welcoming partners to everybody. We're opening the doors wide open so that we can get as money, it's not money, whoop, that was a slip. We can get as much support and ideas as possible. You gotta have fun with this stuff. You know, when you're asking for money, and when you're asking for support, you gotta have a little sense of humor. So you can see where my head's at. You gotta be focused. And then sort of the what value proposition do we provide? Well, there's several, and not any particular order. As I mentioned, just like Aqua JPI, it's an opportunity for us to really dive into this effort that we have talked about at many conferences, but really to say, what are we doing about it? And more and more, people in general, as they should, are looking to public agencies. That's what they are to all companies, and saying, what is your particular agency doing to advance DEI? What are you doing to help people? What are you doing for social justice? And we need to be able to respond to that. And this is a great way to say, even though our particular agency doesn't have a specific staff member assigned to do this, that we are part of this pooled effort to really understand and promote DEI. And who are some of these stakeholders? Well, certainly the public. Public, as they should, are expecting this. And it's no longer just a optional. It's no longer a nicety. It is really a demand by the public, and I think that's very important. The second is our next generation of workforce. You know, I used to say we used to work for paycheck, but now it's not just about the paycheck, it's about the purpose. And they're interviewing us and examining us as much as we are them, and to again, make ourselves relevant to the future workforce. From the credit rating agency, when we issue bonds, they look at criterias. And more and more, these surveillance efforts and these rating efforts are taking into account what agencies are doing in terms of their work with DEI or ESG, environmental, social governance initiatives. And then last, but not last, is our state partners. And over the years, we've heard about different efforts at the state level to figure out how do they make the finances work for water? We've talked about public goods charge. We've talked about a lot of variety of things. And there is sometimes this notion that the water industry is not as connected to the world as we should be. So what we heard from the Aqua staff is that when they went to talk with the regulators and the legislators, they were very happy to hear that Aqua Foundation now exists. It really showed them that there is a concerted effort to advance the work in this area. And it really does help our position when we have to advocate, and when we have to share our stories, when we have to talk to the legislative regulators and the other decision-makers. And this is almost as though I say, you got your own search firm and consultant because we're all pulling our resources together. We're inviting public and private. And it's a great way to look at some of the other, how other agencies are doing things. It's an opportunity to pick from each other's agencies, you know, the talent. And we just keep giving the good things back and forth to really come to a place to understand what the future of our workforce looks like. And it's an opportunity for us to tell a more compelling story to our communities. We're not just a utility. We serve the public. And being able to recognize and promote that we have to reflect the community and the world that we serve as an agency, as an industry, that is compelling, and that is important to build that connection with our ratepayers, our customers, our partners, our stakeholders. So those are just some of the things that we think that value offered to the members or those who are partners and those who sign up to work with us in any kind of capacity. That's important to the success of the future of the Aqua Foundation. And again, we are developing ideas. We are developing committees. The goal is to create a very large table that has room for all and that never runs out of seat. Because if we are in that position, what a great thing that we have. And for someone like me who started the business, gosh, over 20 years ago, it is just a really heartfelt experience for me to be a part of this because we didn't always talk about this. This was not always top of mind. And as you talked about with the recognition of Juneteenth, the LGBTQI+ community and all the things that we are doing, it really is proof that we are getting better, and we still have long ways to go. But if we band together and collaborate and work together, we can get there faster. So that's a little bit of an update. I don't know, John, if you wanted to add anything before we open up to questions?
Well, you're a tough act to follow, too, I would say. Look, I have very fond memories. I'm in Northern California. I'm the chairman of the Board of Valley Water, which is located, we have many names. We have Santa Clara County, Silicon Valley, pick one. But I grew up as a Latino kid in Boyle Heights. My playground, gosh, when I was seven, eight, nine, was the Los Angeles River. Can you believe that as a little kid? And we'd go down there with our bicycles, a bunch of us kids. And at any given point, there's a movie being filmed, some sci-fi creature movie. And we'd go there and we'd watch that. About six months later, we'd go to the movie house, pay a nickel to go in, and a bag of popcorn for another nickel, and we'd watch the movie that we saw being filmed in the LA River. So what is a kid from East LA, Boyle Heights, playing in the LA River, doing as the chairman of the Board of Valley Water? That's quite a story for me. But I'll tell you something. There are other people out there like you and me, and I'm looking at your board and the diversity that you represent as our board represents where we are. Our CEO, by example, Rick Calendar, maybe you all know him. You know, he's a former NAACP president, and he's our CEO. He could tell you his stories as well as our board, which are, we look very much like you, very diverse. And we represent 2 million people. You represent half the state of California. So together, what we are doing is we want to model ourselves to look like the people we represent. And the foundation offers us that opportunity to reach out to our next level, which is our future workforce. Our Water Career Path Education Program, our Pathways Program, our internship program that we offer is a way to fund the opportunity for these young children, offer them scholarships, tuitions that otherwise may not be able to be available to them because of the neighborhoods or the locations that they grew up in. They're overlooked. They're scholars, but they have no pathway to get there. So through the foundation, we're creating that pathway. Through your support, you will be able to help us find those future workers that we're all gonna need. There is no water tree out there where we could pick the skilled fruit and put those people to work. We have to train them, educate them, and that will be our future workforce. That's my statement. And thank you for allowing us to present to you today. Really appreciate it.
Very, very good. Thank, yeah, go ahead. No, thank you. Thank you both. Much appreciated. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments regarding the foundation. So if anybody has a question or comment, let me know.
I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
If I could. Thank you very much. And to Director from Valley Water.
Yes.
I know Rick Calendar.
Oh, good.
And we're on an organization's board called the California African-American Water Foundation Educational Foundation. And I support what the what your foundation is doing 100%. I grew up in LA, and I didn't play in the LA River, but I played in all of the freeway construction projects and sewer projects that were being done. Those were our playgrounds. That's how we got into wanting to be engineers and working in construction. Because there was nothing else for us. So I support what you're doing, and I support the Aqua 100% in this because I've been around long enough to know when you did talk about this. Prior to what happened with Floy, this was like, people said it didn't exist. There was no problem. The problem was created by the people who were suffering from from the acts of people trying to keep us down. So I support what I was doing. I support you, and I support my good friend, Director, the Madam General Manager of Molten Agal. I should go on and on, but I've seen things, and I remember when. And I remember when we could not be engineers in in the area that of public works because we were told that we were going after jobs that belonged to white men. Swear to God, swear to God, folks. I kid you not, it was a white man's profession. You should go where you belong. But thanks to the good people out there who were helpful in guiding, I I gotta tell you that I wouldn't be where I am today if it had been for people like I I have to mention his name. He's not with us anymore, but his name was Erv Spindel. He was a former Director of Public Works for the city of Downey. And I think someone else in this room knows about Erv Spindel. And another guy who had the right attitude was Desi Alvarez. Desi Alvarez, we've met when I was with the city of Lynnwood, my first job in the water industry as a public works director for the city of Lynnwood. Baptism by fire, I got into water. And thanks to Desi Alvarez, he helped guide me along the way. So but if you look around, the number of black engineers, public works directors in our cities today, it's about the same. I was the only one at the time when I when I started. And if you look around today, there's still only about one or two African American public works directors and almost none in water today. So we're trying to change that. And that is why we are with the California African American Water Education Foundation to get the interest and that people know that they can, that if we work together. But you know, here it is, 1970, 19 to 2000 and what, what is 2023? And we're still trying to increase the number of African Americans. I'm going to say African American because I'm African American, in case you didn't notice. So we have to make some changes if if we're going to increase the and and have the and not be in the same boat another 50 years that where are the African Americans in water? They don't exist. We're trying to make that, get them, get rid of that so that there's enough for everybody. So we won't have to to go to outside of America to hire the workforce that we need. It would be, we want to create it here and make it available. You know, so anyway, I could go on and on, but I won't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dirk. Anybody else have a question or comment? I'll just say this, you know, both June and John, thank you both for being here. You know, E J had let me know about the foundation being formed. So we're happy to have you here and learn more. I do understand, of course, at some point we'll have to have more conversations. But first of all, I'm just thrilled because, you know, even in my eight and a half years at West Basin, I mean, you know, this industry, the water industry in California, you know, it's slowly diversifying, but yet we need to continue to do more. We have to encourage other folks to make sure that they understand they have a place at the table in water. You mentioned something, I think, June, you said we're not just a utility, but we serve the public, which that's true. And that's the way I always look at it personally, and I think, you know, my colleagues do as well. I mean, we are part of the fabric of our community here at West Basin. We serve 17 cities, almost a million people. We have all pockets of income levels, all types of people in this district. And I'm really happy that our board reflects the folks that we serve. And that's why it's so incumbent upon us to make sure we do everything we can, be out front and not be apologetic about who we are and what we represent because there are some cities in our area that they don't operate the way we do. This district has always been much more open and and push that envelope. And we aren't, we're not apologetic about that. I'm so glad to see that there are folks in Aqua who are looking to do the same thing. So with that, I I'm looking forward again, as I said, to learning more. How West Basin, of course, might participate. You know, big, I hate to use that word, kudos, but yes, big kudos to Aqua and to you all for doing this because I think the water industry is a great we are very proud of all the work we get to do on behalf of the folks in California and Western United States. But we all know we can do much better, make sure that everybody has opportunities to know what we do and have their their role in it. So thank you again. Our staff will, of course, be in contact so we make sure we understand the latest. And I assume we'll learn more probably at the winter conference. And if you have anything else to add, this is your shot. And we really thank you for your time. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for the time. And I know that all the board members on your board, I know all of you personally. I know that over the years you have been a champion of this. So thank you to all the work that you've done to blaze the past so that something like this can be created and be successful. And I'm very respectful of your time and I'm going to look to the board and E J. I I was going to talk about one more thing, but I I leave it to to all of you to see if there is time for me to talk about the California Data Collaborative.
I would say that West Basin has been participating in the data collaborative for some time. June Lopez and her agency have been a leader as far as that goes. I know that we've participated in their conferences and she and I discussed the fact that West Basin should very much stay involved. I don't know, June, if you had anything else to add, but it's something that I'm happy to work with her on.
Absolutely. Just to say, we've been around for eight and a half years. It's a nonprofit to bring big data solutions to help our community. I said, data is your connection, whether you collaborate or advocate for your respective position. Without data, you don't have knowledge, you don't have the record of accountability. This is one of the things that we're also looking at the Aqua Foundation is that we all know that there is a need for greater diversity in our industry, but we don't have that baseline data. So how do we hold ourselves accountable? How do we measure that? And that's what data allows us to do, whatever that thing may be, whatever is a question that we have. Data allows us to understand how we're performing, where we need to close the gaps. It's a great way to build another very exciting partnership. And I know Director Houston has been part of our summit, Greg Reed as well, and some of your other staff member. I talked to E J quite a bit about it. And just to see how we can get West Basin more involved as actual members. And today I'm joined by Chris Toll and Kim O'Kane, who are staff there. We're not going to have them say anything because I just wanted them to hear the conversation. So I'll make this quick. The main thing is we'd love to have you as members and I can talk to E J more about it. But our next data summit is September 7th and 8th at Stanford, who's our partner this year. And it's going to be a great lineup of success stories and great speakers. And we hope that you can make it. And I hope that I can talk to E J more about what you might consider, again, being a greater participant. And you have great stories to share and we're excited to learn from you. That's all.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you, June, and thanks for that. And I have attended the past. It's a great organization. So you all talk to our staff and we'll see what we can look at. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move to next item. So thank you very much to all of you for being here.
Thank you.
Let's see. We are going to go into closed session. So with that, legal counsel, if you could let us know, closed session.
And we're going to go into closed session for the three items that are stated on the agenda. Public employee appointment, conference legal counsel, three cases, anticipated litigation, attached litigation, and real property negotiators for the addresses listed.
Very good. So with that, we are moving into closing.
Okay, Desiree. All right, everybody, we are back from closed sessions, so we're back in open session. And if our attorney could please report up.
Yeah, thank you, President. There's no reportable action that was taken during close session.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Item six, items too late to be agendas. I do not believe we have it.
Do not.
Our consent calendar, item seven, A through K.
I'm moving on to the consent calendar.
Second.
Mr. President. If I might add one thing. Based off of the conversation in committee, I would ask that the board consider removing for discussion, item seven F.
Item seven F as in Frank? Correct. Okay, so. All right, so we'll pull that one for discussion, but item seven A through E as well as G, H, I, J, A are good to move forward with, it sounds like to me, so. Director Dear.
I concur with that.
Okay. And Director Williams, a second.
Yes.
Okay, so any other questions or discussion? And then please take a roll call and then.
Director John Dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
Yes.
Director Desi Alvarez.
Yes, with the following, our item seven H, the board meeting of April seventeenth, I will abstain, I was not present at that board meeting, I have not watched the video. And I vote no on item R.
You, Jen?
Yes.
I'll need that, I don't think.
Oh, President Houston. Yes.
Very much. I believe we all have taken care of with those.
That's extension three.
Okay. Excellent, all right, so now seven F is in front.
Yes, President Houston, the item before you is our rain barrel purchase for distribution events. This does begin on page ninety-six. This item was heard in committee and at the direction of the committee was brought forward to the full board. At the time of the discussion, staff laid out the three responses to the IFQ for the rain barrel. This included the preferred company Green Lane Environment and Recycling Services out of Ontario, Canada. Their total bid amount for the fifteen hundred rain barrels was ninety-one thousand five hundred. The next second one was Rainwater Solutions, which provided rain barrels that were made in the United States. The total cost of those rain barrels and associated parts is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred. At the committee, we did discuss several aspects, in fact, that the board is in the process of considering a buy American policy. It was noted in committee that these rain barrels were made or manufactured in Canada. The committee did ask staff a question as to where the parts. So with a rain barrel, it comes with a lid, it comes with the netting, I believe it has a spigot, and then there's the connector connecting hose or whatnot to the rain gutters, so there's a few parts, odds and ends that are closed within the rain barrel when we give them away. I want to note that staff did additional research, and it's important to note that the preferred candidate, Green Lane Environmental and Recycle One Services, the rain barrels are purchased from Canada, however, they originate from the Mediterranean, where they are actually used as packaging for food products. They're then sent and repurposed in Canada, so they are refurbished and turned into rain barrels there in Canada. So we do not have yet have a policy, so we do not yet have a definition as to where one thing is manufactured. But I do know that this is originated in the Mediterranean, it's repurposed in Canada. However, the parts in this product, the three or four pieces that I mentioned, are manufactured in a combination of Taiwan, China, and Canada. The second, the second preferred company was Rainwater Solutions, their product is made in the USA. And I know that Gus Mesa is here who presented on this item, I believe that he did some research, and all of the additional pieces and parts are in fact made in America. So the question before you, again, the committee recommendation was to go with Green Lane Environment and Recycling Services for a total cost of ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars. This is the company that we've utilized after the past several years. It's important to note that the rain barrel itself is repurposed, so it's no additional new plastic, whereas the newly manufactured, that's not recycled, so that is new plastic, but they are all made in America. So I wanted that to be pulled for your discussion because there were some questions at committee, and I didn't want to answer that subsequent to the board decision today.
Good. Um. Any further questions or discussion on this? I was at the committee meeting, and I concur with what staff recommended, and that was the will of the committee. So I believe we should move forward with it, but any other questions or comments?
No.
Director Alvarez.
Thank you. I recognize it's a little bit more expensive for selling an American-made product, but the fact that the second little bidder is a hundred percent made in the USA is of significant value. And I will move that we authorize the purchase of their fifty-three rain barrels from Rainwater Solutions.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to authorize purchasing the rain barrels from the Rainwater Solutions organization, which came in at a higher price, understanding that made in the United States, America. I will say that, you know, we did have this discussion at committee meeting, and a part of that was our policy that we continue to work on is not fully in place within our procurement. We have utilized Green Lane in the past, they have done an excellent job. I really don't see a reason why we should change at this moment, and also, this other one is about thirty-six thousand dollars or something like that, more expensive. So I'd like to hear what my colleagues think, but.
You know, we either have the policy or we don't, we're gonna, we already passed the policy, then we follow. We'll never pause.
It's important enough that we do not currently have a policy.
Well. What we don't have is procedures, we do have a policy, the direction was that we would seek to purchase things made in America, and I think what the discretion is to find, and I fully recognize that from time to time, it is going to cost more money to buy American-made product than those manufactured overseas. But there is other underlying reasons for justifying that. One is to encourage more manufacturing in the United States and the employment of American labor versus labor in other countries.
So I fully understand where Director Alvarez is coming from, but again, the agency has not formalized a policy policy for procurement. And so we're, we're in a bit of that void at this moment, as these are being accomplished, and so that's where we're at.
Joe. Yeah, I can, I can jump in, so I apologize that it's taken a while to put the policy to paper, and I'm hoping, I've talked to President Houston about the schedule, try to expedite that. We don't currently, I think what we adopted was that we want to do a buy American policy that's going to focus on requiring products to be made in America, and that the instruction of time was for me to come back. And I had talked about there being some reasonable exemptions that the board would make the decision of, or staff, depending upon who has the authority at what levels, this is actually kind of a great example where typically you would have the opportunity to make a discretionary call. And some of the options, what exists in the federal law, is that the price of the product is twenty-five percent more than that is grounds for a waiver. Some of those are the types of things that I was going to build in the policy, it still is discretionary for the board or for staff, depending upon what the total amount of the products are. So again, I don't think the policy is technically in place in a way that is specific enough for us to feel limited, the board has the option. But I'm hoping to have that discussed and hopefully, you know, whether it's a special meeting or the next board meeting, want to really dig in, because there's a lot of questions to ask, it's not as easy as it seems to implement. And they have very serious costs and practicality implications of which the board may decide are not an issue, or they may decide are an issue, and that's part of the reason for kind of going back and forth on something.
Let me come back to this for one more moment, too, because of the fact that and we've utilized Green Lane for, I don't know, two or three or more years. And I don't mind looking in the future at more options, but we are trying to get this moving and expedited, and they're used to working with us, they've been really seamless. So on that grounds, too, I think it's good to just stay the course with them at this moment, also knowing, yes, we don't fully have our policy in place, so I don't think we, you know, I don't think it's a bad thing at this moment to continue forward this year with this particular vendor. I understand completely where Director Alvarez is coming from, and this was brought up.
Good to move forward with, it sounds like to me, so. Director Dear.
I agree with that.
And Director Williams in second.
Yes.
Okay, so any other questions or discussion? And then please take a roll call then.
Director Don Dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
Yes.
Director Desi Alvarez.
Yes, with the following on item. Seven H, the board meeting of April seventeenth, I will abstain, I was not present at that board meeting, I have not watched the video. And I vote no on item R.
EJ?
Yes.
I'll need that, I don't think.
Oh, President Houston. Yes. Very much.
I believe we all have taken care of with those.
That's extension three.
Okay. Excellent, alright, so now seven F is in front.
Yes, President Houston, the item before you is our rain barrel purchase for distribution events, this does begin on packet page ninety-six. This item was heard in committee and at the direction of the committee was brought forward to the full board. At the time of the discussion, staff weighed out the three responses to the IFQ for the rain barrel. This included the preferred company Green Lane Environmental and Recycling Services out of Ontario, Canada. Their total bid amount for the fifteen hundred rain barrels was ninety-one thousand five hundred. The next second one was Rainwater Solutions, which provided rain barrels that were made in the United States. The total cost of those rain barrels and associated parts is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred. At the committee, we did discuss several aspects, in fact, that the board is in the process of considering a buy American policy. It was noted in committee that these rain barrels were made or manufactured in Canada. The committee did ask staff a question as to where the parts. So with a rain barrel, it comes with a lid, it comes with the netting, I believe it has a spigot, and then there's the connector connecting hose or whatnot to the rain gutters. So there's a few parts, odds and ends that are closed within the rain barrel when we give them away. I want to note that staff did additional research, and it's important to note that the preferred candidate, Green Lane Environmental and Recycling Services. The rain barrels are purchased from Canada, however, they originate from the Mediterranean, where they are actually used as packaging for food products. They're then sent and repurposed in Canada, so they are refurbished and turned into rain barrels there in Canada. So we do not have yet have a policy, so we do not yet have a definition as to where one thing is manufactured. But I do know that this is originated in the Mediterranean, it's repurposed in Canada. However, the parts in this product, the three or four pieces that I mentioned, are manufactured in a combination of Taiwan, China, and Canada. The second, the second preferred company was Rainwater Solutions, their product is made in the USA. And I know that Gus Mesa is here who presented on this item, I believe that he did some research, and all of the additional pieces and parts are in fact made in America. So the question before you, again, the committee recommendation was to go with Green Lane Environment and Recycling Services for a total cost of ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars. This is the company that we've utilized after the past several years. It's important to note that the rain barrel itself is repurposed, so it's no additional new plastic. Whereas the newly manufactured, that's not recycled, so that is new plastic, but they are all made in America. So I wanted that to be pulled for your discussion because there were some questions at committee, and I didn't want to answer that subsequent to the board decision today.
Good. Any further questions or discussion on this? I was at the committee meeting, and I, I concur with what staff recommended, and that was the will of the committee. So I believe we should move forward with it, but any other questions or comments?
No. I.
Director Alvarez.
Thank you. I recognize it's a little bit more expensive for selling an American-made product, but the fact that the second little bidder is a hundred percent made in the USA is of significant value. And I will move that we authorize the purchase of their fifty-three rain barrels from Rainwater Solutions.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to authorize purchasing the rain barrels from the Rainwater Solutions organization, which came in at a higher price, understanding, maybe United States, America. I will say that, you know, we did have this discussion at committee meeting, and a part of that was our policy that we continue to work on is not fully in place within our procurement. We have utilized Green Lane in the past, they have done an excellent job. I really don't see a reason why we should change it at this moment, and also, this other one is about thirty-six thousand dollars or something like that, more expensive. So I'd like to hear what my other colleagues think, but.
You know, we either have the policy or we don't, if we're gonna, if we already passed the policy, then we follow.
We'll never pause.
It's important to note that we do not currently have a policy.
What we don't have is procedures, we do have a policy, the direction was that we would seek to purchase things made in America, and I think what the discretion is in time, and I fully recognize that from time to time, it is going to cost more money to buy American-made product. Than those manufactured overseas. But there is kind of other underlying reasons for justifying that. One is to encourage more manufacturing in the United States and the employment of American labor versus labor in other countries.
So I call you, Director Alvarez is coming from, but again, the agency has not formalized a policy policy for procurement. And so we're, we're, we're in a bit of that void at this moment as these are being accomplished, and so that's where we're at.
Joe? Yeah, I can, I can jump in, so I apologize that it's taken a while to put the policy to paper, and I'm hoping, I've talked to President Houston about the schedule, try to expedite that. We don't currently, I think what we adopted was that we want to do a buy American policy that's going to focus on requiring products to be made in America, and that the instruction of time was for me to come back. And I had talked about there being some reasonable exemptions that the board would make the decision of, or staff depending upon who has the authority at what levels. This is actually kind of a great example, where typically you would have the opportunity to make a discretionary call. And some of the options, what exists in the federal law, is that the price of the product is twenty-five percent more than that is grounds for a waiver. Some of those are the types of things that I was going to build in the policy, it still is discretionary for the board, or for staff depending upon what the total amount of the products are. So again, I don't think the policy is technically in place in a way that is specific enough for us to feel limited, the board has the option. But I'm hoping to have that discussed and hopefully, you know, whether it's a special meeting or the next board meeting, want to really dig in, because there's a lot of questions to ask. It's not as easy as it seems to implement, and they have very serious cost and practicality implications of which the board may decide are not an issue, or they may decide are an issue. And that's part of the reason for kind of going back and forth on something.
Let me come back to this for one more moment too, because of the fact that and we've utilized Green Lane for, I don't know, two or three or more years. And I don't mind looking in the future at more options, but we are trying to get this moving and expedited, and they're used to working with us, they've been really seamless. So on that grounds too, I think it's good to just stay the course with them at this moment, also known, yes, we don't fully have our policy in place, so I don't think we, you know. I don't think it's a bad thing at this moment to continue forward this year with this particular vendor. I, I understand completely where Director Alvarez is coming from, and this was brought up at the meeting, just so we can understand, and we did. With that being said, you know. Motion's been made second, if on your hand, I, I'm not really agreeing with that at this moment.
So what is the motion on the floor?
The motion on the floor is to actually go with the second group, the Rainwater Solutions, which is made in the USA out of North Carolina. And that's what the motion is in a second right now.
It pleases the chair. Gus Mesa is on hand, he's far more knowledgeable than myself as far as the environmental impacts of the different types of rain barrels. So I don't know, Gus, if you have anything to add in relation to the option one or option two.
Good afternoon. President Houston and directors. It's, it's something important here, I think they're both good products. What do you want to do?
Well, my. Question.
Director.
Now, the, the motion on the floor. Is, is, is that the original motion or is that a substitute motion?
That is the original motion.
The original motion, not.
And.
Not the recommendation.
So that's not the recommendation. So the recommendation from staff is to go with green lab, right?
Yeah, Greenland.
Greenland.
I hope we discuss it in committee.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let me.
Which is not made in the United States and contain, and I don't know.
It's alright.
Products not only made in the Mediterranean, refurbished in Canada, and then supplemented for this product made in Taiwan and China.
So. I guess one last thing that I'm, my understanding is that these are being refurbished though and reused. I think they're used for food containers or something in the past. The other product is made from scratch, it's brand new plastic, isn't that, that my understanding from Rainwater Solutions? So it's the first time make and use. Um. No, any other questions? Yeah, I, you know, I. It costs more money to make things in the United States, I get it, but you know, I think that right now we're clear to move forward with what was recommended. But he's calling the questions, so why don't we go ahead and let's have a vote. Go ahead.
Director Don Dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
So.
Director Desi Alvarez.
Yes.
Director, President Scott Houston.
No. They have. Hey, what do we do?
Oh, you don't spend any money, then you save all the money that you wanted to save.
I mean, it's, it's the pleasure of the board, someone could make a motion to adopt staff and have that seconded and see if that changes the vote or not.
And I'll do that. We have to make some progress here, so I'll change my vote, make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Staff's report.
Okay.
No, no vote changing, just a new motion.
It has a new motion, correct, to go with the recommendation that was here, okay, so we have a second and a second, any further discussion? With that, it's all a question.
Director Don Dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
Yes.
Director Desi Alvarez.
No.
President Scott Houston.
Thank you. Getting my forward with rain. Um, okay.
Everybody always wants to save money.
All right, action calendar.
Some point you have to decide what you want.
Action count, item eight A.
Do we need to make a motion on each one of these?
Yes. You would, yes. EJ, sorry, you did, you just go ahead and.
No problem. The first action item that you have before you is item A, adoption of a tax and revenue anticipation note for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For this presentation, we do have our manager of finance, Mary Ann Rexroad, and this does begin on packet page two hundred and ten.
Thank you, EJ, good afternoon, President Houston, members of the board. I'm here to present on item eight A, adoption of the tax and revenue anticipation note for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. I may refer to it as a trance if I do, I'm talking about. As EJ mentioned, this does start out item on page two-ten, it's an administrative item. Just to recall some past history on this, we started this program back in two thousand eighteen, October two thousand eighteen, and your board renewed it back in two thousand twenty-one. At the time it was renewed, we, we reduced the authorization amount from fifty million down to thirty million. Currently, there's no balance outstanding on the CP program, and the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four does not include or does not anticipate that we will use the line. However, in order for us to maintain the line, we would have to issue a promissory note to the West Basin Financing Corp from the district. That financing corp is the, is the, is the libor, if you will, or the person or the entity that's responsible for paying that, that debt, so the promissory note unfortunately cannot be more than fifteen months in term, and so we did this last year, and in order to renew that program, we would have to then renew the promissory note. And so staff is asking the board to approve resolution number zero six two-three-one-one-nine-six. This resolution was prepared by bond counsel and is included in your packet on pages two thirteen, two thirty, two twenty. Just as a note, the CP program does provide flexibility, even though we don't have anything in the budget, it does provide an option for us to have in the future, and it's also a very low cost to make, you know, in order for us to borrow funds if needed. So with that, I'll read the recommendation, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff recommends that the board approve resolution number zero six dash two-three dash one-one-nine-six, resolution of the Board of West Basin Municipal Water District, authorizing the execution and delivery of a tax and revenue anticipation note to support a commercial paper program. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And we heard this in committee as well.
Correct.
Right? All right, any questions, otherwise I entertain a motion.
So.
What's your, I heard a motion. You made a motion.
Yes.
I'll second. Director Alvarez has a question.
Um, on this, it shows a total finance charge of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so to extend a commercial paper, it will cost us a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
No, what, what a little cost this is what we do have to pay Bank of the West for their fees to keep the line in place, it's about a hundred thousand of that.
So we will pay the bank a hundred thousand dollars to keep, so if we decide to move forward with this item, there is a cost of a hundred thousand dollars, and it's not anticipated that we need to borrow any money this coming year.
That's correct, but keep in mind, if we do lapse this, we would have to most likely in the next fiscal year, because we do show in our five-year CIP program that we would need to have some way of provide, okay, and that cost to go back out for a new CP program would mean that we would have to look at paying bank council, our own bond council again, we have to pay the FA. And when we did this in two thousand eighteen, again, just for information purposes, we spent about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to negotiate and get all the paperwork in place. So just want you to be aware, there is a cost if we do renegotiate and want to bring this program back, if you choose not to keep the program.
So it's a hundred thousand now versus possibly a hundred and thirty thousand if we chose not to do this at this point.
Plus the amount that we'd have to pay the bank, which could be a hundred thousand, could be something more depending what the deal agreement would be.
All right. Need the money, and the other alternative is that we, at the time that decided to incur debt, there's a lot of this commercial paper at some point, and it's mentioned in here, we end up rolling over into long-term debt. So we could alternatively decide to move forward with a capital project and just finance it with long-term debt at that time as opposed to commercial paper and then roll it up to look long-term debt.
You could do that, it typically is more costly to go to long-term debt immediately. In the past, we have used the line to keep our interest rate low and the cost of that until a point where we either have no more of the line available, and then we would then refund it to long-term debt. So it does save you by the lower interest rate for the period of time that you have it. It also allows you to only borrow when you actually need it. So as an example, if we were, I know we were talking about a couple of programs that if we went forward with, it would save some money for operations. So we could borrow from the line, roll it over until that project's done, and as we see savings, we could then pay that line back, so it does offer that flexibility.
The more traditional approach to financing project would be to take on the long-term debt, here we're kind of taking a bite at the apple a couple of times and then you're going to roll it up in long-term debt. And one of my understandings was, one of the reasons you want long-term debt is just traditionally that has been for public agencies, a cheaper social money.
For long-term guys? I, no, I think short-term debt, variable debt tends to be cheaper.
So, but it would cost us some money and we're not going to use the line, so I, my, I would question why for any debt right now, I'd rather see us, at the time we commit to building projects, that we then take the long-term debt as opposed to having this ability to go on paper that thing gets rolled up in long-term debt. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, very.
Thank you.
Director Alvarez, so, you know, was.
Yes, you have a motion on the floor, if there's no other questions.
And it was better to the committee, and staff has to come to us to authorize Houston the credit line, I believe, correct?
Yes, we typically do inform the board prior to a draw.
Inform the board, but you have the authority, we're giving.
Yes.
Authority here. All you're doing is informing the board.
Okay, so anybody else have questions? There are nine with motion on the floor in a second, so go ahead and please call the roll. EJ?
Director Don Dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
Yes.
Director Desi Alvarez.
No, but I do want to make a comment, that we were willing, willing to shortchange the American workforce thirty thousand dollars, but we're willing to pay bankers a hundred thousand dollars for money that we probably will not need. So my vote is no.
President Scott Houston.
Yeah.
Hey. Next item. He is in voice, adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yes, thank you very much. This is, again, the budget, I want to again thank all of our staff for the numerous presentations that have been provided. I'd also like to say thank you very much to the entire board of directors for all of their patience throughout this budgeting cycle. For this presentation, we do have Mary Ann Rexroad, our manager of finance.
Good afternoon again. On item eight B, I'll try to keep it brief, I know we had a series of workshops, but I do want to just go through the item with you. So each year we do adopt a budget to meet those financial resources needed to achieve our priorities and objectives that your board has set through its strategic business plan. In addition to those priorities and objectives, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the budget was developed with a number of key drivers in mind. There's numerous ones in the board memo, but I just want to highlight a few, we talked about water variability, we talked about the amount of investment in our conservation programs. We looked at the future direction of the water recycling program, as well as those inflationary costs that we've been seeing on our recycled water program. So these drivers were discussed, as I mentioned, in a series of four workshops we had, the board did provide feedback on a number of issues, such as the staffing, where board originally, or the staff originally suggested seven positions, the board came back and said, let's, we suggest two, which that's been included in the budget here, we talked about program expenses, where there were a number of changes made in reduction of programs, or where we, we remove certain programs altogether, pending notification as an example for a grant. We also talked about our water sales assumptions, if you recall, we looked at our retail sales, we looked at the history, and we have now included in the budget ninety-five thousand acre feet for our retail imported sales. We've included seven thousand for our barrier imported sales, and thirty-three thousand and thirty-two acre feet on our recycled water sales, all that's included within the budget. Also, we looked at different alternatives to our reliability service charge, sometimes called RSC. Those scenarios, we looked at different ranges from zero up to ten percent, included in the budget, we have a seven percent increase in our RSC. The board also asked us about the declining loss rate structure that we currently have on our, on our, some of our sales, recycled water sales. We did have a chance to talk to our district council, and it was recommended that with the cost of service study, that would address this issue, so we would maintain that current tiered structure for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. I want to point out a few highlights on the budget, with the revenues, we have a proposed total revenues of two hundred and forty-four point one million. That includes a pass-through of metropolitan water rates and charges that will go into effect on January first, two thousand twenty-four. As I mentioned earlier, we also have a seven percent increase in our RSC, moving that from two fifty-seven to two seventy-five, and that would be effective July first of two thousand twenty-three. We also are reducing the fixed service charge to our customers, that's West Basin's fixed service charge, from six point three million down to about six point two million, and that would be effective July first as well. In addition, we included seven point three million in customer and capital grant funding, and about a million dollars of external funding associated with our technical planning projects. On the expenditure side, also two hundred and forty-four point one million, we did include two additional staffs that I mentioned earlier, we included seven and a half percent merit pool, and a reduction in our benefits from seventy-eight point five to seventy-five point four percent. Also, this includes just over fifty-seven million in our recycled water program cost, if you recall, we did get hit pretty hard with our chemicals this year, and then it also includes a debt service of a twenty point nine million. Last but not least, is our capital projects, which we have thirty-eight point eight million included, of which three point four of it is for new treatment assets. About fifteen point four is our customer development for laterals and pipelines, primarily PV lateral takes up the bulk of that, and then we have R and R of about nineteen million and one million for other projects. So based on those assumptions, our net revenues would be approximately ten point five million for this next fiscal year, which includes that seven point three million one-time cost I mentioned, and it does result in a debt coverage of one point five. I can read the recommendation and open up for questions. The recommendation is that staff recommends that the board adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the top?
Well.
Wait, with the adoption of this budget, and then we'll become incumbent on us to adopt the rate structure, right? So we will be increasing our rates by how much?
Total increase including nets or just West Basin?
Just the West Basin.
That'll be a eighteen dollar doll, yeah, eighteen dollar increase, sorry, I think, but two fifty-seven to two seventy-five.
And that represents approximately?
Seven percent.
Approving of this budget represents seven percent increase in our rate structure, and for every dollar that we increase our rates, that generates approximately?
Every dollar we increase, well, you could figure if we sell ninety-five thousand.
About a hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, exactly, and the seven thousand, yes.
So what we're being asked to do is approve a budget that's going to increase our rates by seven percent. And it also includes a recycled water system that is being subsidized under burden, and that the burden is being incurred by our portable water users. It doesn't anticipate borrowing any money right now from capital, so it does, it is, you're going to pay for all the anticipated capital this year, either from the revenues that are generated for reserve.
There's, and then we have those grants and customer funding, yes. Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, um, this has been said multiple times, as well as I think we heard it obviously at our committee, and I think the committee was pleased with where we're at, so I have no other questions or comments, anybody else or can motion?
I'm with staff recommendation. Second of the motion.
Second motion.
Motion, the second, last call for any questions in this discussion. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and vote.
On dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
Yes.
Director Desi Alvarez.
No.
President Scott Houston.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, next is item eight C as in cat. Without fiscal year 2023, 24, water rates and charges.
Yes, President Houston, uh, as was just mentioned on the previous item, uh, these two items are interconnected. Uh, item eight C is the adopt or to adopt fiscal year 2023, 2024, uh, water rates and charges. Uh, this item does begin on packet page 479. And again, for this presentation, we have Mary Ann Redford, our manager of finance.
Thank you, EJ. So item eight C, as EJ mentioned, is to adopt our rates and charges fiscal year 23, 24. In creating those, uh, and adopting those rates and charges, we do look at a number of items. We look at a revenue requirement to fund the different programs that we talked about earlier, our staffing. We also have to pay our annual debt service and that we want to generate a number, uh, a reasonable amount for our designated funds. All that is taken into consideration when it comes to our, our rates that we are, uh, recommending to the board. As I mentioned earlier, there were several factors that we included when we came up with our rates. Uh, we look at our debt ratio, our debt coverage ratio. We wanted to look at maintaining our designated funds within our policy. Uh, we also look at the near term and the long-term needs for the district as well. So all that's taken into consideration. Um, shown on page 480 and in the resolution 06231195, uh, which was reviewed by district council. Uh, that resolution can be found on pages 482 to 488. Are the specific rates and charges that are recommended for fiscal year 23, 24. Um, I'd like to go through a highlighted them with you and, um, then I can answer any questions for you. So let's start off with the West Basin Tier One rate. That's comprised two past two, two components. Those are the MWD, uh, tier one rate, and that rate will go from 1587, excuse me. It includes the, the met pass-through of their tier one plus their RTS. And then the third component is the RSC. So altogether, uh, the tier one rate would increase from 1587 today to 1605. Uh, that would be effective July 1, 2003. And then it would adjust one more time on January the first to 1677. Uh, and that would include then all the, the rates and charges from Metropolitan Water District. That overall increase is $90 or 5.7%. Charge, which is another pass-through from Metropolitan, uh, will be adjusted as of, uh, January the first, 2024. Currently that's at $9,135 per cubic foot per second or CFS. And that will then change to 9,605 per cubic foot per second on January 1st. With the fixed service charge, uh, this one will decrease this charge. This is West Basin's charge. It'll decrease from 6,312,275 to 6,185,988, uh, nine, eight, 99, excuse me, effective Jan, July 1, 2023. And just as you recall, this is a, an allocation we make to our customers based on their three-year rolling average of their water purchases. Uh, for the recycled water rates, um, we increased the inside and outside service, inside and outside the service charge area, uh, or the tile 22 costs. Those reflect that what we anticipated was our increase in our production costs. For all the other rates and charges, those were set by agreement, and I won't go through each one of those with you, but they can be found in, in the resolution themselves. When we recount these rates and charges, we did make the assumptions I mentioned earlier. 95,000, uh, of retail sales, 7,000 of barrier imported sales and 33,0032 of recycled water sales. So approval of the recommended rates and charges would result in sufficient funds for us to, uh, for the proposed budget for 23, 24 and would achieve an overall debt coverage of 1.50. And with that, I agree with the recommendation and then open it for questions. Recommendation is that the board approve resolution number zero six dash two, three dash one, one, nine, five. A resolution of the board of directors of West Basin Municipal Water District relating to water rates and repeal resolution number zero six dash two, two, dash one, one, six, three. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Mr., uh, Chair.
Yes, sir.
To the, uh, general manager, acting general manager. How many questions or, uh, pushbacks have we received, uh, from the public?
Not received any requests or, or information related, uh, from the public. Uh, we did receive very positive feedback from our, our retail customers and, uh, agencies that we work with. And as mentioned in previous meetings, we did hold a customer workshop. And, uh, most of the comments were related to, uh, issues that West Basin faces, the high chemical costs and, and, uh, our response to the, uh, incident at High Period. So everything's been, uh, very positive.
Thank you. With that, uh, Mr. Chair, I will staff recommendation.
Second motion. Motion by Williams, a second by Dear. Any other questions? Any, so with that, uh, please call for the vote.
Director Don Dear.
Yes.
Director Gloria Gray. Director Harold Williams.
Yes.
Director Desi Alvarez.
No.
President Scott Houston.
Yes. Okay, so that passes. Thank you very much. Item eight D as in dog, Nash Street Lateral Agreement.
Yes, uh, Mr. President. Let me introduce this item by stating that this item was brought through our monthly, um, engineering and operations committee. The presentation was provided by Orlando Rodriguez, our senior engineer. Uh, it is noted that, uh, while in committee, uh, the committee provided very specific feedback and direction as it relates to this project. Uh, in response to those comments made by the ENO committee, uh, staff, uh, and that committee course, uh, was held just last week. A staff has changed the recommendation. And it clearly notes, and I'll read, the staff recommends that the board authorize the acting general manager to execute agreement W3095 with CDC Mar East Campus Two LLC for the Nash Street Lateral Project with the recommendation from the Engineering and Operations Committee to connect the Nash Street Lateral to the 42-inch diameter recycled water pipeline on El Segundo Boulevard. It's worth noting that the agreement is included in the board packet. It is worth noting that the agreement, as is in the packet, includes, uh, drawings of the programmer or the project. Uh, and it does include what was originally recommended, uh, for the project at ENO committee. So I know we have legal counsel here. We have Orlando here. We have, uh, Barca Mr. Leon here to answer any questions. But we want to make sure that everybody's aware that, that's from staff's perspective, we completely understand that the recommendation from the committee was for this specific connection. Uh, and, uh, if the board were to approve, do recommended motion in there, the acting general manager would have a clear understanding that the only agreement that would be authorized would be for, uh, a project as directed by the ENO committee. So with that, I'll hand it over back to, uh, President Houston. But again, we do have, uh, everyone here to answer any questions you might have.
Good. Any other questions? Director Alvarez.
Okay, uh, thank you, EJ, for, uh, that discussion. I do have a concern. Uh, I, I understand the recommendation. The recommendation is per the discussion at the ENO committee, that the, uh, National be connected to the El Segundo line, so it completes the loop there. My concern is that the attached agreement, um, does not contemplate that and specifically has a series of exhibits. Uh, and I will direct you to page 511. This is, does not show that connection. So if we're authorizing the agreement, the agreement does not show the connection. And I, I appreciate EJ's comments, uh, but I would like clarification that we are not authorizing the attached agreement. They're authorizing the attached agreement in concept, subject to drawings and the description and the payment being revised. So the connection completed and whatever additional rule.